Saint John United Methodist Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. I'm grateful to be here today. I'm grateful because I know in our leadership here at the City Council and in the Mayor's office and all the citizenry of this fine city, we can face anything together. And as I'm quickly reminded of the terrible tragedy that struck New Zealand just a few days ago where so many lives were taken in the house of worship, I'm even more grateful for the opportunity to bring this invocation to stay. And as a scripture reading, I just brought one scripture that I thought was interesting, which talks about the fruit of the Spirit, which of course is so much in what this body's about. And it's from Galatians, the fifth chapter, it says verse 22. "By contrast, the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control, for which there is no law against such things. And those who belong to Christ Jesus crucified the flesh with his passions, desires;" and if we live by the Spirit, let us also be guided by the Spirit, "let us not become conceited, competing against one another, envying one another." So my prayer is, blessed and merciful Father, we thank you for this day that you've blessed us with. Help us to lift each other up with a spirit of encouragement and unity and love and peace and seeking the one accord that can only be found in your Spirit, Father. As we go about the biddity, Prince of the City of Mobile, we pray, Father, that we would do our level best to exemplify that goodness and mercy and grace and peace for all of the citizens of the City of Mobile. Thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence for the lives lost tragically in New Zealand. I know that that occurred thousands upon thousands of miles away, but attack on religious freedom anywhere is an attack on religious freedom everywhere. We've experienced that here in our homeland. It's a terrorist cowardice act, and we'd certainly repudiate those thoughts. All ought to be able to serve the religion and in the manner in which they choose to serve. And I'd ask that we would remember those who lost their lives senselessly in New Zealand with a moment of loss. Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Dayes.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'd first like to begin this meeting welcoming our senior member back to the day. It's Councilman Frederick Douglas Richardson, Jr. We're certainly glad to have him and all of his expertise back. I have missed my partner to my right and glad that he's in good health and looking good. And let's give him a big round of applause. We'd ask first that you would turn off our silence, all of your electronic devices as you enter into the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance for a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and clearly communicate your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk's Office on the, no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday at which you'd like to speak. Your subject matter must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice will not be allowed to address the council. All speakers are granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. All commentary ought to be made to myself, the Chair, and any subsequent council member who would like to respond will be recognized to do so. To maintain order, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Our rules, we're going to abide by them today. If we have people here who can help us make certain that those rules are observed, but we don't want to have to utilize that. This is the people's meeting, and we are happy to have you here and glad you have such an interest in municipal government. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of March 14th. So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, minutes are approved.
Communications from the Mayor's office.
Not this time.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Properly moved to second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have the appeal of Tim Manis, Brenda Bolton, Chris Enzor, Bill Boswell, Peter Burns, Ms. Hamilton, concerning the tree commission's approval for removal of trees on Broad Street.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I might ask Mr. Tolliver if he'll tell them to get on in here. The consortium is still meeting, but thank you, Peter.
It's time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make, I don't know what the thought is, and I realize I missed something, but that we hear from the primary appellant's first
That's the way we want to move.
Municipality? Okay, okay.
Yes, we hear from them first. And then from the city, and then proceed from there. Madam City Clerk, outside of the one, two, three, four, or five, outside of the six who have the appeals, who've made a formal appeal, how many do we have signed in to speak?
Two.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to start with those individuals who made formal appeals. Mr. Tim Manis, and I'm hoping I pronounced that correctly. Mr. Manis, are you pressed? Mr. Tim, we're going to start. This is the process relative to the tree commission's decision.
Tim Manis was one of those appealing.
Right, is he here?
No.
Okay, we'll go with Ms. Brenda Bolton. Ms. Brenda Bolton. Yes, ma'am. Come on down. The price is right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you calling me as the spokesperson for the appellate group?
I'm calling because you are one of the individuals who filed the appeal. And we're hearing that now.
I really think Mr. Boswell probably would be the better first speaker. We've kind of selected him to speak for the appellate group.
Mr. Boswell, he was the next person. Well, since he was next.
If that's all right.
If it will expedite some time, sure. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. My name is Bill Boswell. I reside at 1609 Government Street. Greetings to each of you and to the Mayor's staff. Unfortunately, he's not here today, but greetings. Thank you for allowing me to speak concerning our appeal to the tree commission. I'm here representing the Government Street Collaborative, my neighbors in the Leincoln Historic District, and friends throughout this great city of Mobile, who love and cherish not only our beautiful live oak canopy and the long history it represents, but the future of the live oaks affords us all. Over the last few weeks, we've learned a great deal about the Broad Street project. We commend the Mayor, his staff, and all those who have attempted to make it possible to revitalize Broad Street corridor. It is our firm belief that the Mayor and his staff have sincerely attempted to accommodate our concerns by bringing up several compromises and to explain their position on the importance of the project and why the process cannot be delayed. We agree it is a worthy project, one we have supported and we still support. However, for various reasons that time does not allow me to enumerate, the project has had significant changes over the last couple of years that not only threaten large numbers of live oaks, but the project as well. So we must ask you, our City Council, to override the decision of the tree commission unless there are further compromises allowing more existing live oaks to remain, a mitigation plan where trees are planted to make up for the lost ones, and a more open process on this and other projects involving our neighborhoods. We base these requests on the following discoveries. We have discovered in the past few weeks that our sister cities here in the southeast have a different measure of worth of the live oak and a different requirement for how much landscape is required for them to grow and be healthy. We have discovered that several of the live oaks must allow parallel parking along Broad Street corridor, even when it would be possible to swap a few parking spaces to allow more live oaks. We have discovered that there is not enough time to consider alternative ways to save our existing live oaks because the early design did not take them into consideration. We have discovered the scope of the project is much less than was anticipated early on, leaving out a large number of neighborhoods who thought they too were getting their Broad Street revitalized. We have discovered only recently that these changes come at a cost of numerous health live oaks having to be removed. Again, while we support the Tiger Grant Broad Street project, this all comes as a big surprise because we were never asked, if we had a choice between our live oaks and these changes, which would we choose? Hence the public outcry that led to our appeal. To his credit and that of his staff, the Mayor very graciously offered to meet with the representatives of the adjacent neighborhoods. The meeting went well. Various compromises were offered up. The saving of four existing trees and the use of live oaks as replacement tree in eight locations. Also, we learned that there appear to be more live oaks remaining than was initially thought. All very promising and hopeful signs, and we came away from the meeting feeling the Mayor was sincere in his pursuit of finding a better solution through compromise. Yesterday, we met with the Mayor's chief engineer and others to seek further clarifications and possible compromises. It was a fruitful meeting. In it, we learned how difficult it is to change any part of the plan without impacting some other part. We were pleased by the city's offer to consider the following compromises. One, swap parallel parking spaces for existing healthy trees. Two, establish a Broad Street mitigation to plant more live oaks. And number three, plant a large live oak tree in the proposed roundabout at Canal and Broad Street. A commit on the part, and number four, a commitment on the part of the city to create an independent committee composed of members appointed by the neighborhoods that would be a conduit for information for all existing and future projects. We feel we can work with the Mayor and his staff in a respectful manner that will yield a successful outcome, making it possible for the Broad Street project to achieve its goal. Together, as citizens who love this city and a Mayor and the City Council that provides leadership and vision, Mobile will rise as tall and strong as a live oak. We initially came into this meeting today wanting, not really to have the appeal, but to have a delay in time to work with the city to finalize the details of these requests. We have spoken with the city this morning. There is a process in place right now going on where the chief engineer, on behalf of the Mayor, is seeking to put in writing those promises and commitment. Councilman Williams is to be sponsoring a commission to establish a neighborhood organization, representation, that would act as a conduit for...
Councilman, correct, let me correct.
Say it again.
Councilman Manzi will be sponsoring that.
Okay, and we appreciate any and all of your sponsorships. We would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
He can co-sponsor. What he doesn't understand is this is not just for downtown or District Two, this is our entire city.
Right, this is the entire city.
And so anybody's welcome to join.
I hope we have seven that'll sponsor. Thank you.
Yes. So everything is kind of moving, the pieces of the puzzle are moving around right now. We're very hopeful that we can get this done. We met outside before the meeting held, before this meeting began, discussing this with our members of our collaborative. We do not have a unanimous vote, but we have a majority vote that we will go forward with what the Mayor and his staff is proposing and with what Councilman Williams and now Councilman Manzi are sponsoring. Because we feel that it is very important, one of the most important parts of this is that going forward, we as members of the community will be able to have ourselves as part of the process and being able to avoid the situation where we found ourselves several weeks ago at the tree commission meeting, being surprised that all of these trees were being cut down. Now, we're not going to be able to save, we don't believe, the large amount of trees that we'd like to save. We will have the opportunity, based on the promises made by the Mayor's office, to look into saving more trees, and that is what we wish to do today. Get that promise.
Mr. Chairman, time's up there. You'll get another opportunity to speak if you need to.
Yes, Mr. Boswell, your time. I was giving him a little more leniency in that he's representing, you know, several, in a sense, in essence, yielded their time to him as spokesperson. So I wanted him to have an opportunity to articulate all of that, that the group as a consortium wanted to tell us.
Mr.? If I could, I'd be happy to support, make a motion to waive the five-minute rule in Mr. Boswell's case.
Second, probably motion is second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You can continue with any further comments.
I wanted to, I had copies for each of you with the agreement. Unfortunately, as we were discussing, most of them disappeared from my hand. I'll give this to the clerk, and perhaps she can get that to you as quickly as possible. The, as I said, we have agreed as a majority of our collaborative. Now, there will be individuals who represent different parts of the collaborative that will have some concerns with this. We're going to continue to work with those parts of our organization to see if we can come to a unanimous agreement. The problem that we are having to overcome with many of our members and just citizens in our communities is that unfortunately, many people have a feeling that our government at many levels just doesn't really listen to its citizens, doesn't involve us as much as they should, especially when it impacts our daily lives in our neighborhoods. So in many of our members' minds, what's most important is that we have a voice, that we, as city taxpayers, be informed of what is coming and what the city wants to do. Now, we know we're not always going to get our way, and there are things that the city has to do sometimes that even they don't want to do. And I think this is one of those cases. I've said in this last two or three weeks that, you know, having sat with the Mayor and talked with him and his staff, I don't agree with the vision of our Mayor sneaking out and trying to find an oak tree to cut down. But that's just not what he's about. He unfortunately, I think, has the situation where he has a vision for the city that many of us support to help improve our great city. But every time you turn around, thankfully, there's usually an oak tree. And we want to make sure those oak trees stay, as many as we can. And that's why we are, that the city is offering this compromise. We hope that we will be able to save several of these, especially the larger trees. But the great hope is that going forward with the establishment of the commission or committee, whatever you want to call it, it gets us into the room, it gets you into the room, so that you know, we know, and the Mayor's staff knows all of the issues involved. Because I don't think it does the city any good to have to deal with this on every project that they are going to want to try to do over the next several years. And if we have citizen participation in the beginning at a higher level, then I believe we can avoid these hiccups and we can have a better understanding of what's being done. So at this point, I want to thank you, thank the Mayor and his office, and we wait your advice.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you so much for your time. I know when you gather up federal funds, there has to be documentation that the community is supportive. And I've asked for that, and I did receive it, but it went back to '16 and '17. And any of the drawings and the options were not what is out today, hence the surprise that you talk about, although I know the administration has worked closely to, you know, do it in their mind, a very good project. You've made an appeal, and you want a little more time so that there is a signature? Do I have that? I want to completely understand what you're asking this council to perhaps achieve as a goal for your group.
Well, additionally, yes. This morning, before we met upstairs in the Mayor's office, we were seeking a delay so that we could work out the compromises, get the city to agree to these in writing. And then we just felt that it was going to take a week or so to get some of that done, as well as especially particularly item number one, which is the swapping of parallel parking for an existing healthy tree. The situation with that is that the city has asked us to go and find those trees, submit those trees. And we'll get with their engineers and look at the plans and try to determine that that tree, okay, we can do that in this case, but in this case, we cannot because there's something underground, utility company or something that is going underground that would not allow that tree to remain.
Is your group actively creating that documentation for the city?
We're in the process of seeking out those trees, which is obviously not going to be easy for us to do that. Now, the city's told us, don't come to us with 40 trees to do that. And we have, so we have to try to come up with what we feel are the ones that have the healthiest trees and the ones that have the best chance of surviving. So, and this is one of the main points that those in our collaborative are somewhat concerned about, that we are agreeing to a, and I'll just say this, a pig and a poke, in that we may be agreeing to something that is not going to end up giving us anything in the end.
Until it has teeth.
Right, because there's nothing here about specific numbers.
Right, and you're comfortable with a letter from the administration that you think perhaps if we were to now table or lay over for the week our vote on your appeal, that that would be a better position to take?
In our agreement with the city at this current stage, we are not asking for the delay. What we're asking for is a firm commitment signed by the city on the first three.
No, but a delay on your appeal is what I'm saying. Like you're not asking...
I'm not asking, initially, we're going to ask you to delay your decision, but because we have this agreement with the city today...
You do have it signed.
Well, that's what's, when that comes in, then we will say that, you know, we do not want the delay. At this point, I don't have it. It's not in my hands yet.
Mr. Boswell has been working diligently for the last hour and a half at one position or another to inform everyone. In the meantime, Mr. Amberger, the absence of the Mayor and Mr. Wish, both out of town and available, has penned an email that was written in '27 that agrees to all three, that says that the city is dedicated to continue to work with the group on the three things that we discussed yesterday. In other words, we hold firm to our agreement. And it's been the group's hope that in very short order that the Mayor will follow up and ink that same...
And I believe, Mr. Boswell, I believe that the commitments made by Mayor Stimson, by our chief engineer, Mr. Amberger, by Chief of Staff Paul West, I believe that these are firm commitments. But as a secondary backstop to that, a tree plan has to be submitted with the contracts relative to this Tiger Grant. And an actual tree plan, tree by tree, has to be submitted to this council. And if what's submitted to us is not satisfactory to the majority of this group we'll put together, then we'll have a secondary option not to move forward. So you have two, two stop, you have two opportunities to make certain that this works. As my colleague just said, you have a belt and a suspender. If the belt isn't tight enough, the suspenders will hold the pants up.
And that should hopefully give some comfort to those that are not in total agreement with this agreement that we have agreed to.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
But this Tiger Grant is an important and transformative initiative for our community. The changes that we'll see on the Avenue, the changes that we'll see on Broad Street, those will be once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. We just left, my colleague and our Councilman Small just left the National League of Cities, 2,500 cities there from all across the country, all of them would be clamoring for this level of federal infusion, of state infusion of resources. And so I'm happy that we've reached some kind of happy, I know we're not going to get 100%. I don't agree with myself 100% of the time.
Neither do I.
But I think we've got a good agreement, I've seen it. I think this works. It gives everybody some leverage and a seat at the table. And I'm happy that, you know, I know everyone won't leave here pleased. The Minnetonka's, I don't leave here pleased, but I believe this will be a good way for us to move forward.
And if I may, one point, going forward with this hopeful commission that will be created, one thing that I think that needs to be... created, one thing that I think that needs to be made clear is that we can make certain that we get as many of the neighborhoods involved, all the way down Broad Street to Brookly on both sides, and so that, and up in the MLK area. And because the more we have of the diverse population in our city involved, the better the outcome will be. And that'll be our goal as part of the collaborative in trying to bring more organizations within our group as well.
Yes, sir.
But that commission needs to be representative of all of Mobile.
I guarantee you it will.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Gregg?
Thank you, Mr. Boswell, for coming. We appreciate you being here, as well as all of the other members of your group and others who are here in the audience today. And we, the council, understand that not everybody will be pleased when you start talking about coming to the middle and trying to find ways to compromise in order to move forward. Not everybody is happy with everything, and we certainly understand that. I agree with you about better listening. That's true on any projects, especially those that deal with these federal funds, because we get the federal funds while we apply for the projects first, and the federal funds are awarded to us, and then immediately design starts and things like that. And sometimes what happens, we've seen this in other cases, is that the neighborhoods are left out of that pre-design discussion. Council members many times are left out. We don't get it until the design is pretty much a draft form and ready to start moving through the system with a timeline attached. So we have to do a better job of ensuring that residents are on board immediately, especially if it's going to impact them. And the council members are the ones who initially will know, that's not going to work. We need to bring residents in to talk about this, to see how we can keep those funds and make this project work, but in a way that is best suited for the neighborhoods. Okay? That's my speech on that. But I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to come to the table and thank the mayor and his staff, and Nick and Matt and everybody who's involved for coming to the table and saying, okay, let's see if we can make something work. Giving up those parallel parking places, I think for the trees is a good idea. You're probably going to have some issues with those businesses there who may want the extra parking, but I think it's a good way to swap out some of those trees. The document that you talked about, I know, I was just asking Ricardo and Nick, as we were sitting here, they're nodding their heads that yes, as Mr. Williams said and Mr. Manzi said, that document is in play now. You will have it on paper. It will be signed. And also this morning, Nick Amberger told us that he is taking that document or the revised plan that you all have looked at to the tree commission so that they have the new revised official plan on record. And I think that helps give all of, gives us a better sense of, you know, security that this is what is actually on the record. It's not the original design. It's the newized plan. And so I know y'all have your work cut out for you, but I really applaud you for what you're doing and your willingness to work with us. And the council here certainly wants to work with everyone to make this the best project that we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to just make a brief comment about the process. I've served as council member for District Two now five years. We had some 60 community meetings across the length and breadth of the district. And this is a subject matter that we certainly could have had a meeting relative, a meeting that included the community. Had I, as a councilperson, been aware of what was being proposed to the tree commission, I was not aware. And I want to make certain that those who live in District Two know that. I was not aware of the proposal. When it was brought to my attention, I immediately drafted a letter to the tree commission and contacted my representative, who's here today, Jesse McDaniel, to let him know that I was in alignment and in congruency with the community as it relates to the trees. So I'm hopeful, as we move forward, that we have increased communication of projects that are, that could be somewhat controversial so that we, as leaders of the respective districts, can convene our neighborhoods so that on the front end, we can get some of this feedback and maybe avoid some of the controversy that we've experienced as relates to this particular project. Now, I applaud the administration for their efforts in engaging, which in one, realize that there was a problem. I applaud the administration for being so open to engage the community, listen to the community. These four items, I am in total support of. And I'm hopeful that we can use this model in other respects. And I applaud the advocacy that I have seen from the Government Street Collaborative, from the Lankoff District, from Church Street East, from the Maze Bill, all of the local neighborhood associations who've been so active, proactive, once they found out a problem existed. So thank you all for, thank you, Mr. Boswell, Ms. Bolton, Ms. Enzo, everyone who's worked so diligently to get us where we are now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Who would like to speak next? Ms. Bolton, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. I mainly wanted to come to the microphone because.
If you give us your name and address, please.
Sorry?
Your name and address.
Brenda Bolton, 310 West Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Lankoff District. I mainly wanted to come forward because I have a handout packet that has a photograph of a parallel parking strip that terminates at a corner with a bump out that allows for an oak tree, just to let you know that we're not, you know, that we do have sort of an engineerable idea in mind, that I hope you can see the logic of, and there are a lot of benefits to it. One of the things that's pointed out, for example, this terminates on a corner, and it takes up the space that would be, that we're parking would be disallowed at a corner anyway, so it solves two problems at one time. So these are the kind of solutions that we support. And if we, and our original goal was to ask for a week to do more research and find more solutions like this. I guess I have one question, and that is, if you take a vote at the end of commentary, is that vote going to happen before we have anything in writing or signed? Or is this email that you're referring to be what we have that you base your vote on? I'm a little concerned about that.
Ms. Bolton, I believe in the absence of Mayor Stimson, in the absence of Chief of Staff, Mr. West, you'll have the email from Mr. Amberger. And secondarily, you'll have our ability not to move forward with the plan because they're going to have to present a treaty to us as a council with all contracts that come before us. And so I think.
And that leads me to my second question, and that is, what will the number vote? I mean, the contract has to come to council, which it comes for a vote, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So it has to be five members in agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, we always get nervous when, you know, what moves forward or doesn't move forward depends on a five-member vote at councils. So I guess I'm saying that I want you to look me in the eye this morning and make me feel comfortable that things don't go well if we give up this week's delay, negotiate more, and we get to the contract to council stage, and it doesn't approach some of the implied promises that we're making to each other this morning. Look me in the eye and tell me that we will not be making a mistake this morning. I mean, I understand that I'm just asking, I'm asking you to support us if it gets to that point.
You will not be making a mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi.
You won't be making a mistake, Ms. Bolton. I just don't know any other ways to communicate or articulate a spot that we're going to be as open. I think the mayor's office has shown that. I think we've shown that even in our past track record.
Mr. Manzi, I'm not questioning your commitment to District Two. And that was the third thing I wanted to come to the mic to say, because you made it clear from the day of the February 19 tree commission meeting that you were with the people in your district. And we've known that all along, and I think that has helped us organize and helped us get the board that we got. The final thing that I want to say, I don't know how much time I have, but we have 11 or 1,200, 100 chairs on a petition that I want to give to the clerk for you to peruse. There, I've also included some of the comments that were given with the petition that I think would be interesting for some of you to look at. I also have this illustration of the parallel parking tree bump out, along with a position statement that I've made copies for each of you as well. And thank you for hearing us this morning. And like Mr. Boswell, I appreciate Mr. Amberger and Matt and the other folks from the group that met with us. I do think that they met, I left feeling that they were making a good faith effort. And that made, you know, that made all this possible. But you are our representatives. We recognize that. This is a District Two project. And so I know, Mr. Manzi, that it's your leadership and your commitment to us, and Mr. Williams' commitment this morning to come out and talk with us further. All of you have done that, and we appreciate that. And please know that as a citizen, I know what council support means to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, would anyone else like to speak in this particular appeal? Mr. Burns, then?
Good morning. My name is Pete Burns. I live at 255 North Jackson Street. And like everybody, I want to applaud the administration for doing the work that they have done to get the Tiger Grant where it is, the Government Street Collaborative. I applaud everything that they've done. As a member of the Tante, we are supporters of the Government Street Collaborative. But I'm a dissent from the agreement that has been proposed and kind of generally supported. Reason for my dissent is that number five of the proposals was that there be a one-week extension in order to negotiate the terms, and then it would come back to you. This is the, it would come back. And the fifth request was a one-week extension. Now, during that one week, I would expect that there would be details, swap parallel parking spaces for existing healthy trees. What's that ratio? How many trees, how many parking spaces? Anybody here? No. Nobody on either side of the table knows. And I'm not saying that the administration will act in that faith. I'm not saying the tree commission will or the Government Street Collaborative will. But that is an agreement to agree. I'm the guy who called it a pig and a poke because that's what I view it as. We think, well, okay. But it may be that what the administration is thinking is that we gave up two parking spaces and you got two three-inch caliber trees. So is there a meeting of the minds here? And I think we should recognize the visceral connection that people have to these trees, particularly large live oak trees. Remember when the guy, the rabid Alabama fan poisoned Auburn trees? That was an international incident. Remember when the guy girdled the large live oak tree, the inspiration live oak at Magnolia Springs? That, too, was an international incident. Why? Because the trees are irreplaceable. And to have another week, and if it, I think they can make, I think the administration can make a week to give the tree commission and the government street collaborative an opportunity to dig in and say, well, okay, here's what we really do agree to. I understand, I think, at least generally, suspenders and the belt as it applies here. But this city council is going to be in a bind if you get the proposal. Citizens object, but the Tiger Grant's going to be gone. The passage of time is not your friend. It's like flying an airplane. You know, altitude is your friend. As you lose altitude, you're closer to a crash. As you lose time, you're closer to a crash. An agreement to agree is not the answer that I would advocate for my client. And here, I'm representing the live oaks, and I think we ought to take another week. Thank you.
I have a question. Have you, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We're now holding what Mr. Amberger sent to Mr. Boswell, and there are three to it. One of them includes the word feasibility. The other is possible. And do you think within this week's time, some of those feasibility could become known and not just whatever is feasible? Because yes, I think the next phase, and I believe Councilman Manzi, when he's telling you, when these contracts come to us, you know, after they're out the door and we get the bids back and the lowest bid comes to council that the administration accepts, we could stop it then. But if we're going on this document that says it's a possibility that some of these goals will be met, then there really isn't much room for us to say, you didn't make them. But if another week will help that become clearer, more concise, and I don't know what a week does to the timeline for the Tiger Grant, but we were hearing April 1st, and I don't know if there's any more documentation our legal counsel can give us on any rules or regulations with when the city must apply?
I don't know that I have. I know that the absolute legal deadline is September 2019. Under the Code of Federal Regulations, the funds have to be obligated. And obligated means that there has to be certain agreements signed. I don't know, and what I was trying to figure out this morning, I don't know if tree commission approval is part of the federal requirements. In other words, I don't know that this will hold up getting the signed agreement. But there is an absolute hard deadline. The funds have to be obligated by agreement by September 2019. The funds have to be sent by 2024. So there is some urgency because it's not just tree appeals, it's all kinds of permitting issues.
I understand that. There are many tentacles to the project. I get that. But the one week that you're looking for, for this document to become more concise and clear, is that what you're advocating for? Because if we're, if the only choice the council has now is to either accept your appeal or to deny it, and there'll be reasons up and down for this council to make that decision, if that's what we're asked to do, I'd like to hold it up a week to get this so that it's just a little bit more documentation. And I understand Nick has the authority, but it would be nice if it was the mayor's signature. And if he's, I don't know where he is, if he could do it electronically or ever, I don't know what his travel plans are, why he's not physically here, if he'll be back tomorrow. But do you see my point?
I do, but the, what, my concern is the lack of specificity.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, exactly. And the mayor, I think the mayor would sign the ambiguous one.
Mr. Burns?
Yes. Yes.
Your time is expired.
Do you think in a week, there could be more documentation from your, with, working with this administration?
There certainly wouldn't be less. I would, I would, yes, I'm sorry to be, I wasn't trying to be smart out.
No, I know. But struggling to. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, not necessarily for Mr. Burns, but I know that Mr. Boswell was at the podium speaking about trying to find some swaps, and that's been part of what the agreement would be for. Would one week give you time to go out and get all the specific areas and all the specific swaps? Maybe one or two, but I don't know if that's as many as you hope to have. I mean, it just seems like a very short period of time to be very specific on all of these. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Well, you're correct. We don't know how long that process is going to take. And that is, you know, one of the shortcomings of, you know, where we are. The only positive outcome of this is that the city is at least willing to allow us, you know, time there is available. I'm hopeful that if we do find, you know, five, 10 trees that are likely candidates, and they go through their process, and they are able to determine, you know, we can save so many numbers of these, then we'll have gained that. Otherwise, we won't have gained anything if we don't have their cooperation and agreement to try it. It may very well be the case, and I don't know, I mean, in talking with Nick Amberger and the staff yesterday, it may be that we can have a longer timeline after everything is approved and put forward. Nick brings up the idea that, you know, even the trees that are slated to remain now, that number could change because of some situation in the field that occurs if they did not plan for. And so, it could be that maybe if we continue our process of trying to find these trees to swap for parallel parking, that perhaps we could use that same logic in saying, we have found this, what do you think? Okay, that looks good. And we change the plan at that point. And instead of having the parallel parking in that space, put a bubble out and into it and save that tree. So that's, that's our hope, and it is a hope. I understand that. But I think sometimes, you know, decisions in government are based on hope. And we all try our best to achieve a goal, and we, sometimes we get there, sometimes we don't. People get disappointed and upset. But if we don't try, we'll know.
Just a follow-up, if I might. Nick, you've probably told us this, but just, when do you, when do you foresee the bids having to go out to meet all the timeline for construction? End of June? So number four on our list here, Nick, could be, you know, that this committee that we are setting up signs off on all the steps along the way, and the bid documents, basically before they go out, because the bid documents should show the tree plan, because that's what we will end up getting to vote on. So that might be something. So end of June, you know, y'all will be involved, but before that goes out to bid, we need to make sure that there's an agreement, that you've done everything you can before those bid documents go out, because at that point, it does start getting to be a little late.
And let me make it clear, number four is not a committee with authority to stop or to delay. It simply must be informed.
Where's the number?
Well, there is no number four. We got three things.
I know, I realize that. But what Mr. Boswell spoke up in number four, this committee that Levon so generously accepted the sponsorship on, the, it does not have authority. What they're asking to be is informed. The whole objective, all of this, was to be informed, to have transparency in this government. And it, I think that regardless of how we got here, we're at that point now, and this now is how we maintain it.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Mr. Vice President. Thank you. I don't, I don't, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I think this discussion is very helpful. But I don't think there is a perfect solution here, a solution that every single person in this room is going to be happy with, with respect to every single tree. And that's not going to come whether we wait a week or a year. We've, I think, I think the process that has been set up with respect to this commission, with respect to Mr. Boswell and his groups and the other groups, communications with the administration, the administration's response has been positive. But it's going to be a dynamic process as we move through this. And I think the important thing is that the administration is willing and open, first of all, to set some parameters around, around what, you know, what, what they can do now, but also, and more importantly, an agreement to meet with affected citizens as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Yes, sir. You wanted the individuals to sign out? No, I'm sorry. Member of the Tree Commission. Before you would come, anyone else who actually made a formal appeal that would like to speak? Anyone else?
I hear a little response.
So we've heard from all of the individuals who filed a formal appeal, letter of present.
There was only about one? Anyone who wants to speak?
No, yes, sir.
William Brooks. I live at 1820 Cambridge Court North. I am the District Six rep on the Tree Commission. I'll keep it rather short. A lot has already been discussed. I really want to talk on the communication side. If you remember, about a year ago, we came in front of the city council for that very reason. We were frustrated with transparent communication. I think one of the big changes in our vote this time is that communication was much more clear. In October of 2017, the first phase was brought in front of us. The engineers were there, the Tiger Grant personnel were there. We actually walked through tree by tree. We asked questions about the bicycle path, the width of the sidewalks, what kind of trees would be replaced. It was good. It was open communication. We even knew at that point that the Phase Two was going to be challenging, and there was communication from there. So came back again. So really, just wanted to talk about that. Ultimately, what I would like to say is that allowing this process to work in this way helps. Allowing to become in front of the Tree Commission. In the past, we talked about certifications and issues with that, but allowing the Tree Commission to hear it, allowing the citizens to be part of that process, and allowing the appeal process to be part of that allowed us to get here. Ultimately, if you ask me why I voted in favor of this as part of the Tree Commission, I think the choice is based on the time of, would I be proud of what this Broad Street would be like in 20 years with the greenery that had been placed, or would I have to accept Broad Street as it is now with the live oaks we have? And I would be proud of the voice we chose on Broad Street. So I'll just leave the rest of it. If there's any questions for the Tree Commission, I'd be happy to take those.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we now letting individuals sign in?
That was hard.
That's one. Yes, sir.
Jesse McDaniel. I live at 1153 Old Shell Road, District Two, representative on the Tree Commission from District Two. And I appreciate everybody who has looked in and stood up and been an advocate for these trees. That's indeed what we all try to do on the Tree Commission. And I just wanted to give a little context as well. I may differ a little bit from my colleague, Mr. Brooks, but what we have on your agenda today is an appeal of a decision that the Tree Commission made in a three-to-one vote. I was the only one that voted against it. I'll tell you why in a moment, but I had in my hand the actual permit request, and that request was to remove 55 trees in the right-of-way and to replace those trees with 216 trees, none of which were live oaks. I want to just give you an illustration, if you will. When we considered this at the Tree Commission meeting, number one, there was an outpouring of, let me say, opposition from the community. I didn't see the first person with a 10-speed down there saying that they had to have these bike lanes, but I saw then a dozen people from the community saying, we need to have this process be slower so that we can save these trees wherever possible. I didn't see anybody down there from a business community saying, I got to have these parallel parking spots. I saw 15 people from the community saying, we got to save these trees wherever possible. So when you have that kind of opposition, naturally, you ask yourself some questions, which were questions I asked myself and subsequently asked the city representatives who were there. Among those questions were, can we delay this process? No. The answer was absolutely no. Have to move forward. This has to be done. Can we consider saving any of these trees? Is there any way we can redesign anything to save some trees? No, was the answer we were told. No, we cannot. We have to move forward. Essentially, the Tree Commission was being asked to make a decision with a gun held to their head. We were told, if you don't approve this, we're going to lose this grant, $22 million. Now, what kind of a position is that to put the Tree Commission? I agree with everything that's been said about the value of collaboration and the value of bringing stakeholders to the table. Last time I checked, the Tree Commission has the legal jurisdiction over these trees. I appreciate the Government Street Collaborative. I hope one day the Tree Commission will get the same kind of treatment they've gotten, because we asked and were told, we cannot amend. We cannot delay. So I wanted to give this conversation a little bit of context, because what you have in front of you is an appeal of a Tree Commission decision. And, you know, so you have to ask yourself, is there, these folks are wanting to know if they can expect to have a good-faith agreement with the city. And I would just ask the same question. Can we work in good faith with the administration? Can we expect to be told the truth? Can we expect to be valued? Can the organization, that state law requires, to be involved with the trees in the right-of-way? Can we expect the same treatment? So I just felt like that some of these points had to be made, and I don't personally see any problem with a delay of a week or two a week. I mean, here we are a month now after the Tree Commission's last meeting, and it just stands to reason that, that, you know, if we can, if we can work something out, I don't see why this couldn't be delayed. And, you know, the actual tree permit that was approved, it's a different, from what I'm hearing, is going to be a different thing than what is going to be a product of the Government Street Collaborative effort. So I'm not a lawyer, but legally, is, those are two different things. So I don't know, I would just ask the council to consider that factor as well. They're talking about apples and oranges. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. You know what else? Sign in and speak?
Did the appellant want to make a final comment, or it looks like Mr. Peebles is over there. I don't know if he signed in or...
Mr. Peebles, we'd be happy to hear from you, and then we'll hear if you all could come with one person who'd like to make any final commentary, probably Mr. Boswell, we'll go from there. Yes, sir?
Mr. Manzi, I'm John Peebles. I live at 107 Ryan Avenue, office at 56 St. Emmanuel Street. I've kind of been engaged in downtown redevelopment for a good long time. And about 18 months ago, when they started holding public hearings on the Tiger Grant, I started going. And I've been to a lot of them. And I've seen these plans, and I've seen them evolve. And I belong to some organizations that I knew had a dog, dog fight. And so, our organizations got together, they petitioned, and we had some input. And I can only suggest that perhaps other organizations didn't petition and ask for input, but we got it. And what I learned is, it's an incredibly complicated situation. It is, as you say, Mr. Manzi, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to reconfigure a major artery downtown, which is presently a negative, which is presently a huge, dangerous barrier between downtown and its surroundings, supporting neighborhood. And so, here's an opportunity to rationalize it. Here's an opportunity to put in parking, which is great for the neighborhood businesses, but that's not why the parking's there. The parking is there to slow the traffic down. Who wants to walk on a street with an average speed between 40 and 50 miles an hour at the curb? That traffic's right at the curb, and you're walking on the curb. Do you want to walk there? No, you do not. So you create parking to separate the pedestrian from the traffic, and the parking on a street also slows the traffic down, and they are going to reduce the speed limits on Broad Street. That is going to totally leach the nature of that corridor. The Southside men are all about quality of life. They're all about quality of the urban experience. And tree cover, it's a huge part of that. It's a huge part of that. But it's not the only part of it. The other parts of it are comfort, safety, and convenience. And until you can make traffic slower, make the street more walkable, you're not going to have something that everybody can truly enjoy. You're not going to take this Great Barrier, shrink it, and connect the neighborhoods around it. There's a finite amount of real estate in that right-of-way. And so, if the bike folks are there, and they're demanding bike lanes, and the downtown people are there, and we're demanding parking, and there are trees there that, to the extent they can be accommodated, they should be accommodated, or they can't be accommodated, they need to be replaced. I'm a firm believer in the live oak as a symbol for this city. And to the extent that the city no longer embraces the live oak as much as they used to, I oppose that. But in this particular case, it is a question of finding possible way through a very complicated field to take advantage of a huge win that the city got with the Tiger Grant. And that means some trees are going to have to come out. So they're going to be replaced with other trees, which is small bear compensation, I understand. But I think the significant goal here is turning Broad Street into something for the next 50 years that is a plus for the surrounding neighborhoods rather than a negative.
Thank you, Mr. Peebles. And not only Broad Street, but Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. And that's a quarter that, yes, sir, that has traditionally been the business quarter of the African-American community. It's certainly in need of a renaissance, and I believe that this infusion of resources will do just that. Will do just that. So, you know, that's something we need to take into consideration as well. Any others, any other speakers? Mr. Richardson?
Let's not forget, the St. Stephen Road Corridor is the only U.S. highway in the corporate city limits of the city mobile with two lanes. All other U.S. highways in the city mobile have four lanes. So it's time for us to address the St. Stephen Road Corridor. So I want it on the front page, front burner.
I certainly agree with you. Any other individuals?
Chairman, is there anyone in the council desire to hear from the administration?
Sure. Mr. Amberger. We're going to hear from Mr. Amberger, and then I'd like for us to proceed with a vote. Mr. Amberger?
Nick Amberger resides in 205 Government Street for many hours of the day. Yeah, I think there's, and first, let me thank, first by thanking Mr. Boswell and Mr. Bolton for engaging us and the bigger group in a productive manner, not just saying no, but working with the administration to find, to strike the balance. I've heard the council recognize, and what I've heard the group recognize, and certainly what the city and the staff has recognized, is a challenge of these... what the city and the staff has recognized, is the challenge of these projects like this, rebuilding infrastructure in the built environment. It's a necessary thing. It's something that we're all gonna be faced with time and time again in the coming years, but it's very much a challenge. And I think there's probably a lesson that's bigger than just trees here that we all need to take away from, is that's stay involved in your local government. I mean, your local government, your engineering staff, we're in these offices every single day. And we try to get out in the field, a lot of us do, but we are there all day long, answering phone calls, emails, text messages, people just showing up at our counter and wanting to talk to us. There was one speaker that referenced the, you know, the previous engagements of the Tree Commission to introduce the project, which we very much did. There was another speaker, Councilman Gregory, mentioned that the length of time of some of these projects, and that is one big challenge, that many of these projects that are so large in nature, the time between public meetings and interactions, which there always is, there are always meetings when there's federal funds involved, that, to the time they actually become a reality, those can often be months or years, and sometimes multiple years before they happen. Engineers were notoriously not the best communicators in the world sometimes. We work at that very hardly, but I can say, on this particular project, we've had 18 different engagements, some large groups, some small groups. So, you know, the engineering staff that's part of the Tiger team, the consultants, I mean, we have gone... Like I say, we've gone as far as we can go, because we can always improve, but we have certainly gone farther than most other projects, you know, of this nature have been. We informed Mr. Boswell and group, and this is informative to everybody, I think we've informed this to the council members, we have an office that is dedicated to this particular project. It's that big. Our project manager, Ms. Clark, her office right next door to it, we have graphics there that's open for anyone, any citizens of Mobile, any citizens outside of Mobile, to come in and be engaged in that project at any point in time that they want information, because it's very dynamic. As Councilman Dave said, it's a dynamic process. I do not believe we have a week to spare. The change that were asked to be considered, the swapping out on-street parking for additional space, they've gotta be evaluated, they've gotta be evaluated through, you know, one is the adjacent property owner, what's their thoughts and positions on that? And more importantly, the utilities that lie beneath. We shared with those that came to the various meetings, we shared the Madrid of infrastructure that is beneath the street there. And I don't... Drew, if you could come and pull up that one sheet. You know, in a modern city, you know, most folks just kinda take for granted the stuff that's up against the ground, the water lines, sewer lines, the gas lines, telecommunications lines, telecommunications lines, that make the life that we all live be what it is. This sheet that we're gonna pull up here is just example of one street. That's what it looks like. I don't ask you to try to read and digest all that, other than to say that just about every line on there either represents a curb, a gutter, a water line, a sewer line, a gas line, a major drainage feature. And so, the challenge is, on these projects, is finding real estate that large trees, live oaks, which we love too, can coexist with all of those things. I mean, the sewer is necessary if we wanna have restaurants and be able to flush commo and, you know, have things. Power, of course, is necessary. All of those utilities are necessary, and we believe that trees are necessary. The struggle on all of these rebuild projects in the built environment is availability of real estate to accommodate a tree that's going to become massive in its space. And so, you know, we applaud groups and some of the suggestions that Mr. Boswell has suggested in working with collaboration between the private groups, the city, and then the private property owners, that may have that available real estate to be able to incorporate in that in the future developments and redevelopments. But as far as the project is now, you know, there's snapshots in time, and we're the snapshot in time that we've got to move forward. You've heard some dates that are a few months down the road, but there's the processes in place where we have to make plan submitted to ALDOT and FHWA that we're just basically out of time. And I think we all... One thing I think we all can agree on, we would hate to see this opportunity to have that kind of capital dollar infused into our city. You know, it would be a tragic loss for all of us, and much like one of the other Tree Commission members spoke, I mean, it's, you know, it's a balance. I mean, we'd rather have what's out there today, or we'd rather have something that's probably a compromise from everybody, a compromise from the engineers that are designing it, a compromise from ALDOT, who has an ownership interest in the nature of the U.S. Highway lanes, a compromise of the groups that are representing the trees, a compromise of the business owners that have invested their personal monies in it. So, this project is very much a compromise of everybody to move forward. And I think we've got something that's, while not perfect, it's pretty darn good. And we would hope that the council would take the action and, you know, support the project.
Thank you, Mr. Amberger. I think he's... It's five minutes.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Mrs. Richardson?
Thank you. Was there any consideration to using any other products that are on the market that could make a tree be more survivable in an urban setting?
Yes, there was, and there still is. These are some numbers that I think that need to be... These are the numbers that the media needs to put on... You know, there's 180 trees out today.
I'm not saying for all.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-four trees, the number of trees that are proposed. So, an additional 114 trees are being planted. Now, granted, they're not all live oaks, because a lot of the available space that's out there cannot sustain a live, mature oak.
With the kind of conditions that are on the ground today, you're saying they could not be survived?
Just with the available green space. I mean, you just can't plant a tree, a live oak tree, that's gonna... We hope to get five or six foot in diameter in a space that's only five or six foot in green space. I mean, you just can't do that, and you can't plant it on top of infrastructure like that. I mean, it's just, there's the balance of it. And so, you know, we've looked at every reasonable component. We've introduced some other trees. There's a nut-all oak that's a very similar tree to a live oak, but it just doesn't have as much impact in the root system as does a live oak. And again, in meeting with the groups, the compromises that we made, you know, they will likely cause problems in the future with the infrastructure, because the trees, the live oaks that were compromised that got swapped out for the nut-all oaks, they're in areas that are probably not as big as we would like them to be.
If you put cement down, but perhaps if you put pavers or non-pore, like porous type of substance... I read about this. I'm not very knowledgeable, I'll be honest. But I know that there are cities that have used other products than cement to put over root systems, which, you know, oftentimes does not make them healthy.
As all the councils well know, you know, with our CIP program, we're seeing sidewalk issues throughout the city. And the only product that can stand some test of time with the root of a tree is reinforced concrete. And what we do now is we bridge up into roots, you know, to keep the sidewalk ADA compliant, and we do that to find the balance. And so, we do. We spend probably, you know, on average, somewhere between a half a million dollars and a million dollars a year to...
But no other products but cement?
Right. I mean, the pavers, I mean, a tree root would dislodge a paver.
Right, but you can come back and replace them and build it.
At some point, you have to build things that are maintenance-friendly to the city staff. With unlimited resources, yeah, we could do anything, but there's a rationale, the resources you have in maintaining the asset in a functional...
Depends on the priority, I guess.
And, take this opportunity to remind everybody, maintenance of sidewalks is the responsibility of the budding property owner. You know, the city is choosing to do that.
Say that again.
Maintenance of sidewalks by city ordinance is the responsibility of the budding property owner. The city's program that is undertaking sidewalk repairs is meeting the requirements of our ADA transition plan by putting the ADA ramps on the corners, chosen to fix all the pieces in between as a matter of goodwill, so that when a block is done, it's entirely, you know, walkable for the community. But there's nothing that prohibits an individual property owner from going out and repairing their own sidewalks. In fact, it says, basically says for them to do that.
They can only put cement, right?
That's... Well, they could put some other product if they brought it forward, but the reality is, there's not another product. If there was, we would've figured it out a long time ago.
We really don't want people repairing sidewalks. If you're gonna do that, you really need to get with the city, and I would not...
Be a permit.
I would not even go there if there are property owners.
Yeah, they have to get a permit, I understand.
Call me if you need your sidewalk fixed, or one of your council members, and we'll work it into CIP.
Nick, what's the bottom line, Nick?
The bottom line is, we need either the appeal withdrawn, which we would be grateful if the appellants would be favorable with that. If not, we would ask the council to deny the appeal. And we need to move forward with the project we've made. We put it in writing. I know the mayor and chief of staff are not here, but I like to think, in their absence, my word is, my email is good. I think they would expect that out of me. And, you know, it's... We have to have the drawings, knowing that the drawings may have changes to some... I mean, the water lines, guess what? There may be some changes in the field that happened there. Sewer lines, storm drain lines, there will be field changes. That is just a reality of any construction project. We have notes that all the trees that will come down, the city's arborist will be involved in that. And, you know, I encourage Mr. Boswell or any of his other group to be engaged with us also as well as the project moves forward. I mean, it makes it easier for us when we know what everyone wants, and we try to find that compromise on these projects. And what we think we have done, it's what we thought we had done, and that's what we will continue to do as this phase moves forward and the subsequent phases of the project move forward as well.
Thank you, Mr. Amberger.
Mr. Sheriff, a mic?
Yes, ma'am.
Nick, you may or may not have any response to this, but I know early on, we saw up and down the corridor, pretty much every tree had a yellow ribbon or a piece of tape around it, and I think that led to a lot of confusion, because it meant to, I think, most everybody that every one of those trees with a piece of yellow ribbon or tape was going to come down. Now, I know we were able to see through Google Maps, a street-by-street look at the trees that were being saved, that were going to potentially come down, and a lot of those were already diseased or already were on the list to come down anyway. And I think probably the Government Street Collaborative may have also seen some of those. And unfortunately, everybody has had the opportunity to go through and look at that. Our arborist, Peter Toler, you know, showed us that. I think that made a lot of difference to many of us who were under the impression that it was, every tree was gonna be mowed on everywhere for no good reason.
That was a very unfortunate... That was, that I don't know who did it, but that was, you know, that was just an irresponsible thing to do, to incite the group, the greater group of people. You know, it was, you know, as the technology's improved and as our communications improved, future phases of this, we will hopefully do exactly what the council and the group that met with the mayor's office was able to see, where we have, you know, overlaid aerial-type photo maps where you can click on it and pull up the specifics of the tree. You know, it's hard to communicate on a project that will, that has that many moving parts to it, to give everybody every specific about every little piece of it. The meeting that we had with the club group, that was about a two-and-a-half-hour-long meeting where we went through very, very stringent details. The meetings with the council members were very one-on-one like that. So, sometimes to get down to that level of detail, you really have to come in and sit down on a one-on-one basis and literally go through it. Our commitment is to continue to try to improve our level of communication so that those actions don't happen. You know, did we do it perfectly? No. Did we do it... Do we think we did a good job? I mean, yeah, 18 meetings is pretty substantial for a project. Did we need 19 or 20? Maybe so. Will we have more in the future? Absolutely. But, you know, we'll do better. We appreciate the group ability to work with us and not come in and engage us in a combative way. And out of that, I think, came some compromise that will yield a good result for everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just one, Mr. Amberger. Is the live oak endangered?
I don't believe the live oak's endangered, no. I believe it's...
It's not an endangered species of tree.
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Boswell?
Just a couple of short items, and I know you guys wanna move on to other business. What we would... I'd like to just ask Ms. Anderson and is Nick Lee up there? On our agreement, what I would prefer having as soon as possible is, in addition to what you've sent to me in the email, is the mayor actually signing a document stating he supports that? And I'd also like his commitment, either in that document or in a separate document, saying that he supports this commission. Because if, you know, the city council can, and I don't, I may be wrong, but the city council can, you know, appoint a committee, but if the mayor doesn't support the commission, you know, the spirit of the commission, and doesn't allow us to have access, then it's gonna be worthless. So, what I'm wanting to make certain of is that the mayor signs off on the commission, that he will appoint some of his staff, you know, to be part of that commission, and that he will agree to... We have the details yet to be worked out, but basically, that we want it to be a conduit of communication between the citizens and the city. So, if I can get... I don't know who Matt, you or...
I'll bring it up to him.
Okay, well, bringing it up to him is one thing. I know you can't, but you're the guy that...
I believe you can be able to sign it.
Okay.
Is he...
Is there anyone else?
That Mr. Woods is here.
Mr. Richardson said just as much, the mayor's committed to moving forward with not only what Mr. Amberger's agreed to, but, you know, looking at a commission and making sure that we have a person who is on staff who's engaged with you.
Okay, all right. All right. And just one other comment about the parallel parking. I just wanna make sure Mr. Peebles understands, we understand that we do not want to do away with all the parallel parking. We agree with the concept of it slowing down traffic. We're not asking, we're only asking for a few parcels of the parking to be used if we can find those trees. So, the parallel parking, we want to stay. So, just wanted to make sure he's clarified that.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, and I know we're...
Oh, my... Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I understand that, but this is very important.
I don't, I'm not knocking the mayor.
Um, Ms. Commissioner, let me make sure that I understand publicly what you're envisioning. This would be revenivates from each district, and not just to go see only federal grant programs, or are you saying any, anything that involves trees?
Not just trees, not just trees. I mean, this isn't just about trees. This is about projects that impact our neighborhoods, neighborhoods throughout the city. And yes, we ask representatives, I mean, I'm from each of the districts, but we also want representatives that are appointed, maybe on a rotation basis, from various neighborhood organizations, and then a representative of the administration. Right.
We would have to create that. I wanna stress that what we don't wanna do is try to duplicate the Tree Commission. We have a Tree Commission.
We don't... And again, this isn't just about the trees.
I get that, but I wanna make that point clear, that we don't wanna be redundant in that fashion. And any commission that creates would certainly be advisory in nature.
Yes.
And we'll go from there. I'm appreciative of all of the time that everyone, neighborhood leaders, has expended with this particular issue. I think we have a happy medium. Everyone is satisfied, but we've made, we've gained some yardage on the field, to use a football analogy, and I believe this Tiger Grant will be a touchdown for this community. And what we don't want to happen is another city come and steal the ball, and then we'll raggedy Broad Street and dilapidate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, because we couldn't come together over trees, just being very honest.
And...
So, I'm happy that we've found a compromise. So let me finish. So I'm happy that we've found a compromise. And I don't see where one wish delay is gonna solve any other answers that, that has been posed. The mayor has shown that he's willing to engage the community. I wish this engagement had to happen on the front end. And I hope as we have projects of this nature, that it will happen on the front end so that we won't run into the oak blocks as, that we run into right now. But we, we found a solution. I'm happy that the majority of the consortium is in support of the solution. And we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk? Do we have any other? So do we hear a motion?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a motion, but I'm gonna preface my motion by reminding everyone that our council attorney advises us that all motions need to be made in the affirmative.
Yes.
So even though I'm not gonna support this motion, I'm going to make it. And the motion is to grant the appeal.
Second.
Proper motion and second, that we would, that we would grant the appeal. So those who advise us, Madam, I want to make sure we get it right.
If you vote yes, to grant the appeal, it is that you reverse the decision of the commission.
There we go. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. It's my understanding that the new plan has to go back to the commission and our talk of this. So I don't understand why we wouldn't grant it in that manner because we're basically giving their validity and accepting that the tree commission made some errors in its judgment. I'm not saying that it's an individual, they were flawed people, but their decision, and it appeared from one of representatives, that they were not giving any alternative, that they could have maybe worked to change some of the, the trees that were slighted. It was a nay, 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 yes, or no, no middle ground. And that's disturbing to me to put volunteers in that position, working with, you know, and trying to get a balance at the same time. It kind of erodes the fabric of our city when I see that happen. But if this is coming to the tree commission, where is the harm if we accept their, their appeal? I, I don't understand how that, that change any timelines or anything. Because we're told it's gonna be a new plan that will be submitted anyway.
Any further discussion?
Just a, a question.
Mrs. Gregory?
If the appeal was granted, does that mean everything starts over? I know at our pre-conference meeting, Mr. Amberger mentioned that he intended to take the revised plan as it kind of finalizes itself, if you will. I know I'm kind of repetitive on that, but the revised plan back to the tree commission so that it is on record, correct?
For record, for record keeping, we intend to submit them another, another version of it. We don't believe the changes are substantial to really differentiate. In fact, it's a lesser impactful plan than what, than what the tree commission approved.
You're just sending it back to advise them of the change. You're not sending it back for action.
That's basically correct, yes.
But it would be there on record, though.
It'd be on record for them, yes.
So if the appeal was granted, then what is the process? Do we want to, Mr. Woods?
That means we've lost a month and we wasted a whole lot of time compromising. That's, the administration's position, I think, and what we're talking about today is asking you to mutine, to vote no on this appeal.
The tree commission meets historically once a month.
Once a month, correct? But they can have an emergency meeting.
Um, yes, I'm fine. Go ahead.
Mrs. Rich, would you like to speak?
No, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. They're allowed to, with 24-hour notice, they can have a meeting, correct? They don't have to wait for the, they're gonna meet soon, I think this week, if I'm not, tonight.
Oh, tonight?
Right.
They might not be able to take this up because it wasn't, wasn't publicized on their agenda. They could meet the next day or two days out.
Right, but they wouldn't be reviewing anything different. So you, you, it would be a thankless task. They couldn't put it on the agenda tonight, and you wouldn't be reviewing, it wouldn't be reviewing anything different because remember, as we all talked about, we don't have everything in place just yet. And we wouldn't have it in a week.
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's nothing that the tree commission does that can't be appealed. The bug stops here. I said, let's go. Because if we go back to the tree commission and make another decision, it can be appealed and bring it right back to us. We're here. We all line up.
I, I, Mr., let, let me say this. In light of the inordinate amount of effort that is gone into this compromise, and in light of the fact that the majority of those who've been so active support the compromise, I agree with sentiment from, from Councilman Richardson. We have not only one safeguard, but two safeguards as it relates to these trees. The, the place is there. A delay at this point would not answer any of the substantive questions. It's gonna take time for the collaborative to go and find the trees that they want to advocate for and marry that against the utilities and all of the other nuances that go into this process. And, and so while there'll be some who won't be pleased with this particular position, I am in favor in light, in light of the fact that those, the majority of those who filed an appeal worked out a happy medium with the administration. And in, in light of the fact that the administration has been so open and, and, and willing to work with those who filed this appeal, I believe that track record will continue. We have Mr. Amberger's word. I believe Ms. Simpson has personally assured me prior to his leaving of that. And the safeguard we have at the end of the day is that if it isn't what the community can agree with, once it gets here, as Mr. Richardson just said, the bug stops here. The mayor doesn't approve contracts. There's councilors, and that's your safeguard. And so, any further discussion?
I, I do have a comment. I was just...
Mr. Williams?
Waiting until Ms. Rich got done.
Mr. Williams?
The objective of the appeal, as I see it, has been accomplished. Really, it was about the same delay that Peter's talking about, that Pete's talking about, has already been accomplished. That appeal, that, that delay that couldn't happen, happened for 30 days because of the procedures that are in place for an appeal. We already had that time. And we've made significant progress. I say "we" because we're all in this together. We've, we've, we've created transparency. Although some would say it was a arduous process, it has, it has been completed. We have the commitment of the administration to reduce the number of, of trees. Wasn't that the objective? Was to save some trees? This isn't about planning commission, I don't, excuse me, tree commission. I don't think it ever really was. I don't think anybody ever had a problem with the tree commission did. It was about this plan and about most of us being surprised. So in this delay, I think we're all well informed. And now the decision before us is, did the tree commission act inappropriately? Was their action arbitrary or capricious? That's, that's the basis, I believe, for our decision today. And if so, would sending it back to them change that decision that would bring about something that is beneficial to the community? And I, I think not. But I do applaud the, the entire action. And I think the objective is accomplished. And you have my commitment to that commission, as well as having the tree plan in the contract, that the work accomplished will be in accordance with that plan. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
We have, we have a, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Dave, you restate your motion.
The motion is to grant the appeal, which would have the effect of reversing the plant, the tree commission.
Is there a second?
Second, I already seconded it.
I'm just making sure we got everything clear.
Sure, I understand.
We've had discussion. All those in favor of reversing, all those in favor of said motion, let me know by the sound of ah.
Aye.
Sworn. All those in opposition?
No.
No.
So we have a vote of one to six. The, the motion fails, and it fails due to two, it did not have a sufficient support. I want to thank all of you who've come, all of you who've so, who spent so much time in this process. Stay engaged. As I have information, I'll be sharing it with the community leaders. I believe we're gonna see a beautiful broad and a revitalized Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. as a result of this process. And so many live oaks will, will bleed as a result of your advocacy. So thank you for coming down today.
Absolutely.
One, two. Was she in the room?
No, I think she went to the...
Did she vote?
She voted, no, she voted, it was six to one.
Okay.
That, that, that was.
Yeah, she voted.
One to six.
Yeah, one, four, and six, yeah, for not the appeal. Correct.
Why are you looking, why are you looking perplexed? You got it?
Yeah, it was pretty cool. I mean, it was.
All right. Yes, ma'am. And wherever you can combine, it would be helpful. Madam City Clerk? Yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
Appeals, we have request for wave of the noise ordinance from March 23rd on Government Street and March 23rd on Windsor Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved to second and a discussion. If not all in favor, aye. Appeals approved.
Public hearing today, it's a public hearing. Took her approval of the application of WHCAL LLC, this is a Z-trip, for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxicab service.
Anyone here that would like to offer in a commentary on this particular public hearing? Yes, sir?
You don't have.
You can come, you can come on, ma'am. Sir. I believe we're in favor of what you want to do, though. Just to let you know.
And I'd, I'd remind, when the answer is yes, it's probably best not to talk too much.
Okay, very. I, the CEO, Bill George, is not able to be here today. He apologizes for that. Actually, I operate WHC in Pensacola. We have a fleet of 111 vehicles in Pensacola, a large wheelchair fleet, ADA compliant, and that's what we want to bring to Mobile. The taxicab situation in Mobile is woeful. So we would like to take over the location on Airport Boulevard. Currently, it belongs to Mobile Bay Transportation, a yellow cab in Mobile. And we'd like to do a great service for you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions to other community committees of the council, Eddie Erby.
Morning. Eddie Erby, 1116, Richard Rowe, 36618. I think what I want to address you, I tried to get an answer from Public Safety Director, but he, he's since left out. But I was trying to find out, is there a city ordinance preventing the Mobile Police Department from participating in military escorts in town?
No, sir. And Mr. Erby, this, this discussion would probably be best, you know, between you and the Public Safety Director. He gave us some commentary at pre-council.
Okay.
If you could call or either meet with his relative to that, it would be most helpful.
Sounds good. Yeah, he said, yeah, but he had to run out. But I've been trying to call him all weekend. I know he's been busy, but I just wanted to get an answer so I'll know. Because our only concern was between broad and government, especially when you're coming from Smalls or Heritage Funeral Home, you've got about 25 or 30 bikers in front.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Resolutions held over 23173, accept a deed for the acquisition of property approximately 6.4 acres along Spring Hill Avenue for the three-mile quick Greenway Trail Project. 21241, authorized contract with Industry Services Company for the fire training and refactory concrete coating. 25242, accepts temporary construction easements needed for the 2018 miscellaneous group drainage improvement project. 25243, permanent drainage easements and one quick deed needed for the 2018 Harbor Drive, Darwood Drive, Farnell Drive ditch and drainage repairs project. 61244, authorizing memorandum of agreement with James Allen Estes for settlement for on the injury claim.
Properly moved to second and a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passed.
Ordinance is being introduced 01011.
Consent resolutions, ordinance for later for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced 03248, 86245, 255.
Immediate consideration of consent resolutions 03248 through 60255.
Second.
I touch you, I touch you, okay.
This probably motion and second and a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03248, reappoint point Mizzou to the Alter Point Health Board. 08249, approved purchase orders for requisitions over $7,500. 08250, approve item-based bids. 37251 and 252, recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant, retail liquor license for Montego's Bar and Cafe on Airport Boulevard, and for a restaurant, retail liquor license for Timothy O'Sullivan's on O'Sheel Road. 5858, 53 and 254, assessing cost for removal of weeds, 1584, and repeat, weed link number 276255, approval award of special to the firefight of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program.
So moved.
Second. Properly motion and second and a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced 13256 through 21258.
Motion to suspend the rules for me to consideration of resolution 13256 through 21258.
Properly motion and second and a discussion. Well, there's a motion we've got.
Who's the second?
Who's the second? Do we need a second?
We're in CIP, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a two we can vote on.
Does 2577 be excluded?
Right.
Oh, with the, you want to say with the exception of 257?
With the exception, yes, please.
Okay, with the exception of 257.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
13256, authorized change order with Gorm Air Conditioning Company for Dibron YMCA chiller replacement. 21258, authorized contract with Moran Architecture for Langen Park Restaurant renovations.
So moved.
Properly motion and second and a discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am passed.
Resolution's being introduced for the first time 01259 through 37269.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of 01259 and the remainder will hold over for one week pursuant to council rules.
Got you. Properly motion and second and a discussion. I just want to continue to thank our wonderful, dedicated committee county commissioner, Mysia Lundgood, for, for her continued participation in projects like this. This will bring the basketball and recreational media on the avenue to life. And we appreciate that $6,000 that she's contributing toward the overall cost. This will be about a $200,000 project. And we're appreciative. This will be about a $200,000 project, and we're appreciative of all of her efforts.
Are you going to have lights?
Next phase.
I asked that question at pre-council.
That's the next phase. We're going to say let there be light, but we're going to let them play first. Sun go down, you need to go home. And then if they ask for it, we'll bring that amendment. Any discussion?
I haven't, oh.
We still have on this.
Pardon me?
We didn't vote. She didn't call it out.
Well, let's get a motion, a mode out.
It's motion and second, that was Dave's and Gregory's.
So we went to discussion.
To suspend the rules?
To suspend the rule.
That's only, she hasn't called out the-
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01259, authorized county to supplement city funding for the construction of Martin Luther King basketball court.
Now let me say all I said again. I want to thank my dedicated wonderful county commissioner, Ms. Syria Luckgood.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Public hearings, call for, excuse me, call for public hearings. 41270, call for public hearing to approve the application of Katavia Henderson doing business as New Beginning Medical Transportation for a certificate of public convenience necessity to operate a show service scheduled April 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion and second, any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcements.
Mr. Richardson?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start off by thanking my colleagues, my family, citizens in District 1, citizens all over this city of Mobile for your prayers and well wishes. While I was down with a medical procedure, I went to the doctor this morning, and the doctor said that I could come to work. In fact, he said I could drive to work. So my daughter asked me not to get excited over nothing. So she showed up, and she said, if I stand up, you need to shut up. So she never did stand up. And she was threatening to stand up at one point, but she didn't have to stand up. And I'm not 100% yet, but I am able to come down to perform the necessary functions of my office. And it has been less than three weeks, and the doctor is more than pleased. In fact, the doctor said he would like to use me in some of his advisement. But I'm just thankful to everybody and glad to be back.
And we're glad to have you back. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Mancy. Greetings to the citizens of District 3. Don't forget on Monday, excuse me, on Tuesday, the 26th of March, we will have our district meeting at the Gear Yard Elementary School starting at 6:00 PM. At 5:00 PM, we have several venues that are coming in, talking about jobs. So anyone that's looking for a job, please come to the Gear Yard Elementary School on next Tuesday at 5:00 PM. And again, the district meeting will be held at 6:00 PM. We had invited several members of the administration. Also, Mr. Chris Curry from the Airport Authority will be there. And also, Ms. Michelle Herd on Airbus will also be present at that meeting along with several state presidents. Again, that meeting will begin at 6:00 PM with a job fair at 5:00 PM at the Gear Yard Elementary School on Dolphin Island Parkway. On April the 13th, which is a Saturday, the Mobile United will present its 6th Annual Crate Murder Trail Ride, which will begin at the Arlington Park. The cost of this event is $10. The ride will begin at 8:30 AM with registration starting at 8:00 AM. For more information, just log on to, excuse me, Mobile United to find out more information about this great event that I'm planning on attending. And citizens of District 3, please mark your calendars for the 7th Annual Easter Egg Hunt District 3 on Saturday, April 20th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. This event will take place at the Taylor Park, and this is located at 1050 Baltimore Street. Please come out, enjoy drinks, ice cream, spacewalk, and of course, the Easter bun with many eggs. This would be a partnership with many sponsors such as Cumulus Broadcasting, also Capa Apesai and Buffalo Rock. Again, the event will take place on Saturday, April 20th, our 7th Annual Easter Egg Hunt at Taylor Park from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Thank you, Vice President Mancy.
Thank you, Councilman Small. Councilman Williams?
No, thank you.
Counselor Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My District 7 meeting is coming up on March 28th at the Mobile Botanical Gardens. At 6:00 PM, we will have some invited speakers, including the mayor, Nick Amberger, Chief Batiste, John Peavy, just to name a few. We'll cover things like the CIP program, widening Ziegler, which is always a big item, garbage and trash, and all the noings that everybody wants to know about. So instead of postcards this time, we are trying the Best Rich method of robocalls. So just be listening out for those. We will try to make it the, when you get one of these robocalls, a lot of times there's such a length of, or period of time between when you answer the phone and the speaker actually speaks that you just automatically hang up. I hope that doesn't happen. So we will try to make it so that everybody will either answer the phone or listen to their messages and find out about the meeting. But we will be doing robocalls rather than postcards this time, so just be listening out for those. Speaking of the Mobile Botanical Gardens, we had another successful Plantagea spring sale over the weekend. I went out Thursday for the preview event. And even though the weather was a little dicey over the weekend, I know they had a great turnout and were able to sell their plants, which are vegetables, herbs, flowering shrubs, and individual plants. And they always have some of the most unusual plants that you can find anywhere around. And of course, all the experts on hand to help you plan better for what will actually grow in your lawn and garden. Also want to thank Shayla Biko and her staff for meeting with me yesterday to go over the late iteration of the design for the Three Mile Creek Plan. We are still going back for yet another design. Probably be the third draft as we go forward, but I really appreciate them working with me and the residents who back up to the trail. So thank you to Shayla and your staff. And then just for the council, we will be scheduling an Administrative Services Committee meeting coming up. I've sent an email out to Councilman Fred Richardson and Councilwoman Best Besri who are on the committee with me so that we can get a time. And as soon as we get the date and time agreed to, then we will send out something to the media. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Dedicated council lady from District 7.
We'll now hear from the honorable Best Casper Rich.
Thank you. Just like to remind people of the Providence Hospital Festival of Flowers. This is starting on Thursday, and it's a wonderful event. It will run through Sunday at 5:00. They have children's activities over the weekend, and it's a magnificent floral and plant display. So I hope that people will come out and support the foundation who gets any of the proceeds and profits. And again, it's a great way to support that hospital and also learn a lot about and get encouraged about going home and planting in your own front or backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilman Joel Thomas-Daves.
Thank you very much, Vice President Levon Charles Mancy.
That's right.
I would just like to remind everybody of the District 5 Community Meeting, which is two weeks from tonight at 6:00 PM at Westminster Presbyterian Church at the corner of Sage Avenue and Airport Boulevard. Invited guests are Mayor Stimson, Police Chief Batiste, and Acting Public Services Director Peavy. Again, that's two weeks from today, April 2nd, 6:00 PM, Westminster Presbyterian Church, corner of Sage Avenue and Airport Boulevard. Thank you.
By way of announcements, want to just reinforce that we will be having a meeting tonight at the Union Baptist Church 508, Africa Town Boulevard. This is a meeting that was then called at the request of Aldott. Representatives from Thompson and Genune will be there. And the subject matter will be the Mobile, the bridge that is being proposed, how it will impact the Africa Town community. They want to make certain that they had feedback from residents. And so I'm encouraging citizens to come out tonight. I want to just give you a brief update. No, I'll do that next week. I'll do that next week. That's the end of my announcements. Come on out to the meeting. Tonight, we'll have one in Africa Town. We'll have one towards the down the Bay Area, because that area will be impacted as well. That'll be next month. And I'm appreciative of Aldott reaching out and partnering to make certain that they have the necessary feedback from the citizens that I represent. That is much appreciated. That's the end of my announcements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Probably motion, second, any discussion? If not all in favor? Aye, opposed? I just want to remind everyone that the people at VR are expecting us for lunch today. Can I go? You said no?
I have to be on this one, run home.
Yeah.